Mr. Hyland.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin, here.
Here.
Mr. Redner.
Here.
Mrs. Reese, here.
Mrs. Flywood, here.
Here.
Mrs. Blackwell.
Here.
Mr. Zepos.
Here.
Mrs. Ilkowsky, here. So many tenants.
Thank you. The upcoming committee meetings are listed in your agenda and on the sideboard. We have several recognitions tonight. It's going to be nice to see all our students, so... Mr. Jones, did you want to recognize the BCTC students?
Sure, please, thank you. Every few months, we always have a great showing for these students of the quarter for BCTC. I will remind you that these are the best students, according to the BCTC instructors, in that particular shop, not just the best YMS students there. So, these are at all of the seventeen sending schools throughout the county, and we have five students of the quarters for the second work of the period, and I believe some, at least one, are in attendance tonight. I'm just... Jack Edwards, if you could come up here, Jack, one up here. Jack, Jack was so excited for this, he wasn't feeling well, and he said he still made it in to come get his certificate, so... And Sabrina Quake was a student of the quarter for the second work for early childhood education. I don't think too many made it in. Dawson Rath was recognized for service occupations. Alyssa O'Mana was a repeat selection. She was the young lady who was here after the first quarter for the automotive tech shop. And Olivia Chesky was a recognized student of the quarter for a college project. Is she here? She is not here, they must all be at home studying. I'll make sure that they get their certificates, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And Mr. Ferrantino has some student athletes you'd like to recognize?
Thank you for taking the time. So I believe tonight, we're going to recognize all athletes, no doubt, so we've been pushed back. Three young men are going to get honored tonight, two of which may not be here. I'm going to start with Nate Menon. Nate won the Berks County, then he won the District 3, and then he won the State PIAA Golf Championship. And I think he's actually playing in tournaments as we speak, and there are some grumblings that... He's only in 11th grade, but there's some grumblings that Stanford might be his future to continue golfing. I think there's one or two famous golfers that came out of Stanford, so that is our first one. I'll make sure he gets his proclamation. Second is Jack Cosiniel, who I'm guessing is out running somewhere right now. Jack was successful in cross-country courses, also does well in indoor track and outdoor track. Hopefully, we'll be seeing him here later in a few months with some awards from his outdoor season. Jack won the Berks County Individual Cross-Country Meet, and he also won the District 3 Cross-Country Meet, and I will make sure he gets his proclamation as well. Last, we have Christian Martier. Christian can stand up. Christian is being recognized tonight for making not only the All League and the All County Football Team, but he has also been named to the All-State Football Team. He is going to continue with his football career and education at Lock Haven University. I know his mother and father are here tonight. I've never met a successful athlete that didn't have great support at home from his parents, so thank you for coming tonight as well. I'd like to give you this proclamation, Christian.
Mrs. Zepos?
All right. We also have some good news tonight. As you know, we just completed Minithon last weekend, and so I've asked Mrs. Mengele to give us a report on where we are today. We have still some opportunities to donate ahead, and so we'll just hand it over to you to share.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to share good news, as Mrs. Zepos said. We had 240 students participate in our Minithon, and I am happy to report that we are over the $45,000 mark, so I really, really appreciate what we've done. It would be a successful event if it wasn't for staff, administration, school boards, community, and also one additional note, we're not done yet with raising our funds. We will have our Taste of Wyoming event, which was extremely popular last year. This will go on sale at the end of this week. You'll be hearing lots of information about it. However, once more, it will change. We had to change the date of our event due to many conflicts both inside and outside of the community, so it will be Thursday, April 25, from 6:00 to 9:00. It will still be pretty good, Joe. So, you'll be hearing very much. Thank you.
And we'll make sure that we post that to Facebook and on the website. When you came in tonight, you saw a PowerPoint slide. For those of you who were able to make it over to the Berks County Community Foundation yesterday, the art show is fabulous. And just being in that building is just really a neat experience. It's a green building, you can see plants growing on the roof, you can see how they handle rainwater, just a really neat place to visit. And so, these are just some pictures of some of the artwork that is literally on every floor. And how neat is this, that you walk through the building, every floor, in offices, in meeting rooms, our student artwork is there. So, it's a great way to bring recognition to our students. They have a great display in the lobby as well. And the art show runs through August 15th, so I believe you are welcome to go there to see the artwork, but it was just really neat. And if you were there, you saw the students, actually, especially the younger ones, kind of looking for their piece. It was kind of like a hide and seek in trying to find their piece in the building, which was actually quite neat to see yesterday. And while I was there, if you look at that young lady on this slide, that's Marlena Mitri. She actually has been a recipient of the Stanley Selts Student Award from the Reading Berks Guild of Craftsman of 2016. She's actually going to be on BCTC next week, and so I wanted to recognize her. She won first prize for Thinking Out Loud and $100 with that. But we also had winners in the county art show. Marlena Mitri again for Water Media was first place. Christian Scott was an honorable mention. Color drawing, honorable mention was Isabel Potiphar, I'm sorry if I don't say his names correctly. Printmaking, first place was Kate Brackbill. Honorable mention, Jaleel Cruz. Mixed media and collage was Riley Horner. Color photography, Diana Arias got third place. Sculpture, Samantha Worley. Textiles, first place was Riley Horner. Hand-built pottery, honorable mention David Tice and Christian Scott. And Emma Worley also was the winner of a free Goggle Works class. So that really speaks to the program that we have in the district and really what a fine exhibit this is. So just very proud of our students and what they do. So just wanted to share that good news. Now, we move on to some recognition of good news, recognizing two wonderful employees that we have had in the district, but it's time that they have decided that it's time for their retirement. So we want to recognize Karen Hauck, who actually came to us as a long-term sub and has been with us for 16 years, and so we want to recognize her for her years of service and commitment to the district, to your colleagues who surround you, how wonderful it is that they're here, and to the many students, you probably recognize those names that I mentioned as well. So we're just so, so happy to have had this time with you and the influence that you had in the district and with our families. And so, in just a minute, Mrs. Riley's going to say a couple of words more for you, but also in front of you is Teri Serangoulis, who's also retiring from the district. Well, both of you stand up at the same time, who was here with us for six years in the copy center. And those of us who are anybody in the district, Teri, we thank you very much for all those copies, and despite all the copying headaches we've had this year, thank you so much, Teri, for all that you did to make sure that everything got copied into where it needed to be. And Cheryl Santoro is also retiring from the district after being with us for three years. She was an aide at West Reading, and so we certainly want to recognize her for her dedication to our students as well.
Dr. Ken, did you want to say a word?
Yeah.
And then walk around.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to say, you can see from the turnout of colleagues from Karen, just what a consummate professional she has been, and I think of her particularly in her role as a third-grade teacher, because that's a big jump from our K to 2 stretch of students. We're in grade three, they have to take a state test, and there's kind of a shock of those higher expectations. And I think she always interacted with students in a way that respected them as kind of big girls and boys, and had real rapport with them, and... Sorry that she's retiring kind of earlier than planned, but we wish her the best, and certainly, as a whole school community, thank you for your service, not just to the students, but to your colleagues as well, so appreciate it.
Okay, so now I get to read our initial resolution. Whereas Mrs. Karen Hauck has served 16 years as a teacher and dedicated professional staff member of the Wyoming City Area School District, and whereas Karen Hauck has tendered her resignation from the employ of the district for the purpose of retirement effective January 27, 2016. And whereas the Board of School Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District wishes to recognize her for her valued service and officially record its appreciation, we it hereby resolve that the Board of School Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District observes with regret the resignation of Mrs. Karen Hauck from its professional staff and expresses its deep appreciation for qualities of compassion and dedication which have been so characteristic of her teaching approach with our children. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting of the School Board of Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District held on March 14, 2016, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Karen. Whereas Mr. Teri Serangoulis has served six years as a dedicated member of the support staff of the Wyoming City Area School District, and whereas Mr. Teri Serangoulis has tendered his resignation from the employ of the district for the purpose of retirement effective March 1, 2016, and whereas the Board of School Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District wishes to recognize him for his valued service and officially record his appreciation, be it hereby resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District observes with regret the resignation of Mr. Teri Serangoulis from his support staff and expresses its deep appreciation for his service and dedication. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be recorded in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Wyoming City Area School District held on March 14, 2016, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Teri Serangoulis. Thank you very much. Committee report time. Mr. Zepos, could you give the finance report, please?
Okay. The Finance Committee was held on Tuesday, March 1st, and first off, I'd like to first give a public thank you to Mark Boyer for just all your dedication and number crunching and everything, which is, I just want to say thank you. I can't even imagine how many numbers you look at and the support you provide for all of us, so myself, thank you on behalf of the board. I just want to really thank you for your dedication to this. With that said, following things were discussed, Finance Committee reviewed four quotes for the purchases of 26 laptops for the district office staff. The quote that we received the lowest was from HP in the amount of $20,609. The recommendation would be to use funds from the capital reserve for technology. I believe the other quotes were $28,000 and $25,000, so this was a good $8,000 less and the quality equipment. Finance Committee was updated on new copier lease. District is working with five vendors to secure the best price currently. We'll bring recommendations to the Finance Committee in April on that. We reviewed two contracts for Internet service and transportation with the BCIU and building-to-building connectivity with Comcast. By restricting the contract with the IU for the regional wide-area network and receive... And with Comcast for the building-to-building connection, the district was able to save over $8,800 or projected savings of $8,800 per year, as well as receive higher speeds and network redundancy. We reviewed strategies of balancing the 2016 and 17 budget. We are currently at a gap of 1.27 million. We discussed the impact of a tax increase using fund balance committed for PISers and medical assistance revenue that will not be used in the 2015 and 16 budget. Discussed the details on the impact of PISers rate of 30.03 percent and how that rate affects the budget and potential use of committed funds, fund balances of the PISers. Numerous items that we still need to be resolved before we can act with budget, the 16 and 17, and the state's budget progress is one of our main issues. We'll be bringing further recommendations and solutions to closing this gap at the Finance Committee in April. Fun stuff. We also reviewed cash flow and budget projections. The district should be okay with cash through the end of the year. We discussed budget transfers from high school curriculum and guidance, and then there's some new account signers are now in place for Fulton and the Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund. We did discuss three grants that were approved by AWA, the Hamlet Performance, the Project Read, and Calculators and Document Camera for 5th Grade. We discussed the BCTC budget, which we voted on tonight. There is an increase in the membership share of the budget over the 15-16 school year due to increased membership of Wyoming City Area students. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had our meeting on March 2nd, and started our meeting outside by the tennis court so we could actually get a good visual sense of the footprint of the new courts. Tonight, there's a motion to allow the administration to advertise and accept bids for the tennis court renovations. We then came inside and began to discuss the facilities maintenance building, which has been an ongoing conversation that we've been having. Currently, there really only is space for the building where the sheds are near the turf field. Mike is going to continue to look at different options for the structure, and this will be an ongoing discussion. Currently, the facilities maintenance work area is in the old woodshop, and that space has been allocated to the STEM program. So, it's not an imminent danger, but it is something that we need to get moving on. Camera upgrades are complete at the Hills and at West Reading, should be completed at the high school at the end of this month. So far, the project has gone very smoothly. Bids were received for the bullet-resistant glass at the entrance of the Hills. It's $9,500, and there's a potential donor to cover the cost. The committee will continue to discuss replacing the windows once Mike has a chance to confirm that there is a donor. We also briefly discussed the HVAC asset plan, which I've mentioned before, is a very large project. We're kind of taking it in a smaller step right now and looking at the cooling towers, which is our main concern, and we want to just... Mike has been discussing the train to get a sense of what we can do to possibly stop anything that may happen imminently. We're going to continue to work with that and discuss that probably each month. There's two other items tonight that we're voting on, that were discussed at our meeting. The cafeteria floor at the Hills started popping tiles a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, this didn't happen in the summer when we were there. It's a safety hazard, the floor needed to be replaced. We received bids. Martin Sporing came in at $7,086. They're able to complete the project over the spring break, so we're going to do that. That's one of the motions we'll be voting on. The second is, we're going to be voting to approve the insulation of lights and electrical outlets at the bus lot. Again, another safety concern, it's dark and it really should be eliminated. The cost of this project is $5,961. Both improvements will be paid for from funds from the 2015. Lastly, we began the discussion of addressing external signage at all of the district athletic fields. There are some signs at some locations, however, there's no pieceiveness to any of them. We would really like to come up with a program or a sign that aligns with our facilities usage policy and tie everything together. We're discussing actually forming a subcommittee to really dig into it and really get something that's for every one of our schools is really on board. So, that again will be an ongoing discussion. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, the Curriculum Committee met on March 7. During our meeting, we reviewed the summer reading list for 7th grade. The books presented represented a variety of genres and also addressed current topics that are of high interest to our students, and the students will have six books to choose from. Dr. Jones updated the committee on Senate Bill 880, which delays the use of the Keystone Exams and project-based assessments as a graduation requirement. We're waiting for the Pennsylvanian Department of Education to issue a report, and they're supposed to do that within the next six months. That should give us more information regarding any alternative methods that we could use for students to demonstrate proficiency for graduation. The committee also discussed the K to 12 STEM initiative with the addition of Stacy Hughes, who will be joining the district on April 11. She will be responsible for the STEM initiative for grades K to 6. And then we have Nate Miller, who will continue to be responsible for STEM from 7th to 12th grade. He will also be teaching robotics and honors robotics next year. We reviewed the summer programming schedule for the summer reading program, the STEAM Academy, kindergarten jumpstart, and the extended school year program, and information will be sent to parents in the coming weeks. And lastly, the committee also discussed a memorandum of agreement with the Wyoming City Area Education Association, and what the agreement does is it outlines a compensation for curriculum writing or revision for AP courses.
Technology Committee met March 3. We reviewed the one-to-one initiative and noted that we continue to see low amount of damage in units, along with the charging stations have been added to the library and the technical support center. Also, we are on track with the migration of the teachers' content, moving from Moodle to Schoology. In the district office, we discussed, which is up for vote tonight, the 26 laptops, the purchase of those. We also discussed the implementation of the Primero Edge, which identifies and tracks students eligible for free and reduced meals. We reviewed our E-Alert communication system, and also was noted that the district website, the content is being reviewed and looking at being updated, the different areas, starting with facilities and the business office. There was also a discussion about recording meetings, our school director meetings, and making these available on our website. If no one has any objections to this, we would like to test this, the audio recording, at next month's meeting to see if we can evaluate the feasibility of doing these recordings and posting them to the website on an ongoing basis. Also, for infrastructure, as stated previously, and finance, and also on the motion tonight as approving the contracts with Comcast Cable and BCIU for Internet transportation capability going from 1GB to 2GB and maintaining our existing Internet service level. Technology, also, a lot going on. Developed an online kindergarten orientation system, which is currently in production for the next school year. And lastly, Mr. Minnick and eight students participated in presenting at the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo and Conference in Hershey.
The personnel committee met on Wednesday, March 2. Not much to record out on personnel. We have items within the agenda. We have a number of retired, et cetera, people in those lines. We did fill a copy coordinator position. I also need to fill positions for the ISS department. Still looking on that one, but still looking on that one. But, pretty much, I'm personnel.
Thank you.
We've got the Policy Committee met on Tuesday, March 1, 2016. We have both policies for first reading. We did discuss two policies. We discussed Policy 210 relating to education. This was based upon a concern voiced by a community member. And after discussing the policy, we found that our policy was sound. We reviewed it just a few years ago with our solicitor. Sally McMichael was here, and we walked through the policy as far as how things should work with regard to dispensing education for students, and it feels very appropriate. We did communicate with that community member and explain everything to her, and she was fine with her explanation. Also discussed very briefly Policy 707 relating to facilities. This was just taking a look at it, making sure it's appropriate and proper. We felt our policy was proper. Anything related to our fee schedule, we charge outside organizations to use the facilities should emanate from either facilities or finance and not really from policy.
I have the ad hoc committee report. The committee met on February 22 and March 7. The committee sent a letter to Mayor Rodriguez inviting him to attend future meetings. We also sent questions generated during the February 22 meeting to the appropriate county officials, and we are waiting a response from them. Additionally, a letter was sent to the Wyoming City Borough Solicitor outlining Mayor Rodriguez's proposal and its impact on Wyoming City's fourth voting precinct. During the meeting, I presented the election plan options to elect school directors, as well as Mr. Rodriguez's regional plan that he has proposed. And we also decided to schedule an evening meeting on March 30 at 7:00 PM at the West Reading Elementary Center, where I will again share the presentation that I gave at our March meeting and will allow for public comment. And then I also have the BCIU report. The BCIU board members heard our report from Herbine and Company that commended the Berks County Intermediate Unit on a positive audit for the current indirect cost allocation plan report and the financial and compliance report. And then also, they talked about a shift in their human resources department to, in an effort to conserve the use of paper and assist in the cumbersome process of collecting the documents associated with the hiring process, the Office of Human Resources will implement a program called Talent Ed Recruit and Hire Management System in the spring, which is an online human resources product that allows for applicants to file online and track all their paperwork online. And as you've heard from Maria and George, we authorized a 60-month agreement with Xcel Communications for the provision of telecommunications services for the Berks County Regional Wide-Area Network Consortium, and authorized a 36-month agreement with Comcast Cable for the purchase of commodity Internet service to be shared by and distributed to member school districts of the Berks County Regional Wide-Area Network Consortium. Mr. Painter, you're up again.
Thank you.
Yep?
BCTC. We had a meeting on Wednesday, February 24, 2016, at our West Campus in Berks Township. A couple of things. First though, we have a policy of doing program tours of BCTC, so we as a JOC get to go around and see what these various clusters teach the kids and how it operates, things along those lines. So we have the pleasure of doing the food service program, which is really kind of interesting because we see these people every single meeting because they serve us dinner, which is really fantastic and very good. I've had some fantastic meals there. Not as good as what George might get you, but you know, serious, pretty good. George, pretty close. George is great. Anyway, so it was really cool. It was really cool to be able to kind of go back and see behind the scenes what they do, and the amazing thing is, they actually make everything there. They ship very little in from the outside, they make almost everything they serve, they make. And a number of the students received, I don't know if they got scholarships, but they were accepted at Colonnarius Institute of America, I think, it's New York City, which is a top-time organization, you probably will attest to. You know, so a lot of these kids get to go there from BCTC. The one kid showed us how to, I don't know, order a chicken, french, or leg, I'm not sure what he was doing, but it was like, if I'd be doing that, I'd be talking to you with like seven fingers. like seven fingers instead of ten, you know, so it was very, very impressive. The streets were extremely impressive, and on all levels, it was a really fantastic tour. Now, with regard to our meeting, you'll see we have the budget on for approval this month. I'll just give a quick discussion on that point. You will see that Wyman St.'s share of the budget increases by 10.52 percent. That can be a little bit misleading. It's based upon a three-year rolling average of enrollment, so if your enrollment increases, you're cautious here, the budget will increase based upon our enrollment, and again, thanks to the efforts of the administration. Corey, thank you so very much. Our enrollment has been increasing at BCTC, and as you've heard, our students are doing very well. So therefore, our share went up, but the actual increase of BCTC in ascending disres... was only 1.54 percent, which is way below the index, and in fact, was the lowest increase BCTC has had in, I think since I've been at the Board, which is six, seven years. So, that's really good news. They're doing a great job of educating our students, and as well as keeping costs down for us. And there's also a new program I want to mention. It's the Sports Medicine and Rehabilitative Therapy Program, SMART program, acronym some kind of stuff, but it's starting next year, and this is really exciting because it's really getting into sports medicine and rehab area, which is something really up and coming, really in the cutting edge, so really excited we have to offer that at BCTC to our students, and we expect that program to be extremely successful. And I think, who am I going to ask?
Mrs. Reese, Berks, yeah, too.
I don't have a report, so you have a meeting next meeting scheduled for two weeks.
There was a meeting February 9 and March 8. They are still looking for a development chair position, so if anyone is interested or know of anyone, it's a great organization, and it's a really important position they need to fill. Also, again, look for the changes in the toast on the website in April, and on tonight's agenda for approval are the three grants, I believe that were already noted, which is the Project Read for 300 books and teacher resources for fourth-grade classroom libraries. The second one is the purchase of 180 calculators and two document cameras, and the third one is the Hamlet Performance and two workshops, which will be held in October of 2017. They also discussed the promotion for trade and technology endowment, and noted that at this point, there will be no post-prom party this year. I don't know, Dr. Jones, if anything's changed there?
No question.
Okay. And lastly, there was a presentation by the writer-in-resident, and he's working with the kids one to two days a week and was going to be holding an open-mic session at the end of the semester, and he's here till the end of April. That was it.
Is there anyone in the audience who has comment tonight? Yes.
Hi, this is the ma'am, Terry Taylor, from West Reading. Very glad to see that you have scheduled an evening ad hoc committee meeting. However, I again ask that all of those meetings be held in the evening. You really want West Reading parents to participate, you're going to have to end the evening. We work, we don't have childcare. And I'm also wondering how you're going to advertise that meeting? Will it be on the district website? Will there be something on the Facebook page? Because a lot of these meetings aren't fully advertised to everyone. And then finally, I was asked to bring up an issue from another parent regarding the crossing guard at the West Reading Elementary Center, and ongoing concerns and repeated complaints about his smoking and using his cellphone while escorting the children across the street.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Stone, Gerard Avenue. I was at the, when you guys were down at the tennis courts that cold morning, about the tennis courts, and I heard that you're putting electricity in the courts, and I wasn't sure if we're going to be having lights there so we could play at night, or why the electricity was going to be run through the court. Okay, I didn't know why, if you were running electricity, did that possibly cause a ball machine? Oh, ball machine.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following minutes, February 8, 2016, business meeting and meeting reports, and February 22, 2016, regular business meeting. Do you have a motion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the treasurer's report. May I have a motion, please?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve payment of bills for the month of February 2016 as listed in the financial packet, pages one through four. May I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Vicente, a superintendent?
Under curriculum and technology, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following curriculum and technology items numbered one through three.
May I have a motion? Second? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have a call, please?
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Under finance and facilities, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following finance and facility items numbered one through 11.
May I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Seven yes.
And under personnel and policy, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following personnel and policy items numbered one through 10.
May I have a motion, please? Second? Is there any discussion? I just, like, I consider the resources that's going to be, Mrs. Ryland, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Heinrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryland.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Bill Cosby.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Is there any older business? Or new business? The write-to-know requests for February are on the side. Are there any updates from organizations, Wyman St. Area Education Association? Ask me. And then PTA, the fundraiser is April 24. You can register until March 31 ahead of time, and you register by the T-shirt, and that's how everyone does fundraisers, so make sure you get registration. The PTA is still looking for president and vice president, so if you cancel yourself, please get the word out to your friends that they're welcome to something like that. And then the next screening is fundamental, this is Friday, March 18, and it's featuring Mr. Brown's The Adjunct Report, which is always brought the kids around to enjoy. That's it. So, if there's one for the business, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye. All those? Aye, you're in.